Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, February 2. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N. 2920, TAF City Council meetings will be held in the following manner. Effective October 20, 2020, City Council meetings will be providing seating for six attendees on a first-come, first-served basis. Attendees must wear masks in order to enter the building. Meetings will continue to be livestreamed and public comment can also still be received per the city's policy in response to the Governor's Executive Order N. 2920. First off, in order to protect our constituents, city officials, and city staff, all public meetings until further notice will be held with limited attendees in order to allow for social distancing. City Council meetings will be livestreamed in real time to our YouTube channel by searching for City of Taff City Clerk on YouTube or at this link, www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Secondly, public comments for City Council meetings will be accepted in the following manner. In person, public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the City Clerk at wmayfield@cityoftaft.org, made by phone to the City Clerk's office at (661) 763-1222. Finally, the comments received will be read into the record. Lastly, should a member of the public prefer to speak during the live portion of the meeting, they shall contact the City Clerk prior to the time listed above and provide a contact phone number be available during the meeting times of 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. You will be contacted at that phone number that you provide and placed on speaker to address the council during the meeting time. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself because my shirt is coordinated with the decorations, followed by the invocation of City Councilman Ed Whiting. So if you would all please stand and join me. Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody who would like to, please bow your head. Heavenly Father, you have shown us every day that you take care of us, you watch over us, you love us. Please continue to do so. We have a lot of things to do here at the city and also in our own personal lives. We thank you and we know that you are gracious and we are humbled in your glory for all that you do for us. And in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ma'am. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Crier.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
And Councilmember Evelyn is absent with notice.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. First item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing on cost and placement of a lien on an abated property. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. The property located at 418 South Sixth Street had a nuisance abated. The owner of record has been notified by certified mail and by posting on said property in accordance to the City of Taff municipal code of the costs incurred during the abatement process. The owner has also been notified of the time and place of this public hearing on costs whereby council will hear any objections or protests from the property owner or other interested parties. If the cost of the abatement, as estimated or modified, is not paid within five days of the date of the confirmation, the confirmed statements of expense shall constitute a lien against the property.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. The recommended action is to conduct a hearing regarding the statement of expense. Therefore, I will open said hearing. Anybody wishing to speak either in opposition or support, please step forward. Madam Clerk, did we have anybody contact City Hall regarding this issue?
No, we did not.
We did not, neither by phone nor by email or by written statement?
No.
Thank you very much. Since we have nobody speaking on this, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving and Confirming the Costs for the Abatement of the Nuisance at 418 South Sixth Street, Taft, California, APN #031-160-04-00 in the Amount of $649.90."
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Whiting.
No, no discussion.
Mayor Pro Tem Crier.
No discussion.
Councilman Bryant, do you have any discussion regarding this matter?
Nothing beyond a thank to the folks at City Hall for continuing to harp in our...
All right. Thank you very much, sir. I believe that we've all been here before. It is our fervent wish that anybody who becomes a property owner within the City of Taft takes as much pride in their individual properties as the members of the council and city staff, and so many people within this community do in the community as a whole. Take pride in who you are and where you live. It's not that difficult. Okay. Therefore, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Crier.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yep.
Councilmember Whiting.
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes. That passes on four O with one absentee. Next up, item number two. Report in public hearing to educate and inform citizens of the types of eligible activities available through the State Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is a CDBG-CV funding. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 27, 2020, Congress passed a Coronavirus Relief Act. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, has published a notice of funding availability for the funds of $341,619 allocation available to Taft. Eligible activities for these funds must meet one of the three national objectives. Number one, a benefit to low-income housing or persons. Number two, slum or blight. Number three, meeting urgent community development needs. In addition, funds must be used directly to prevent, prepare for, or respond to COVID-19 and meet CDBG requirements as published in the NOFA and outline as follows. Public services to respond to COVID-19 impacts. Public facility improvements to increase capacity for health care facilities and improve facility safety. Housing facilities for persons experiencing homelessness, including acquisition and rehabilitation. Economic development to support the need of local businesses to retain and bring back jobs impacted by COVID-19. Purpose of this public hearing is to give community members an opportunity to make their comments known regarding what types of eligible activities the city should apply for. Due dates for applications to CDBG are based off the chosen activity, and a separate public hearing will be held to discuss and approve the city's application prior to its submission.
Thank you, City Manager Jones. Recommended action is to hold a public hearing and receive citizen input and comments to assist with the planning and preparation of the city's CDBG-CV 2 and 3 applications. Madam Clerk, did we receive any comments from anybody regarding this issue?
We did not.
We did not? All right. I thank you very much. Well, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Unfortunately, we have nobody within the chambers who wishes to come on this issue, nor did we have anybody reach out. Therefore, I will close the public hearing. This is for information only, therefore we don't require any vote. Hopefully, those of you out there in TV land that maybe you're aware of this now that you weren't can reach out and give us some additional community direction and suggestions regarding this opportunity. Next up, item number three. Citizen requests public comments. Do we have any citizen requests public comments this evening?
Yes.
We do indeed. All right then. Standby just a second. Dennis? All right. Citizen requests public comments. Comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. I think it's Dennis Church that would like to address the council. You may step up, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Is this all right?
Yes.
So my question, my statement is I'm seeking purpose and direction. I'm grateful to live here in the City of Taft. I come from this community. I've lived a lot, learned a lot from this community, and I've hopefully given back a little bit to this community. I live in California. I love the weather. I love the beauty. I love the accessibility of the state, but I'm greatly disappointed with this politics. I am very discouraged by the direction this nation is going. With all that being said, I feel like with everything going on, I have no voice, I have no rights, I have no justice, and I have no freedoms. My only choice, given those things, is to either submit to what's going on or to resist. Our state has been the leader in changing how this nation's elections was ran. I'm requesting for the assistance, or of direction or purpose, from this council to request an audit of the Kern County electoral system, to review any adjudications, and if found, assistance from the DA to bring charges. I don't know what the future will bring, but I know now. I just can't, I can't sit down idly and watch this go by. Any suggestions or directions would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your statement. Thanks for coming and addressing the council. It's nice to see somebody in person here.
In person, of course, yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. We have no other statements this evening?
No.
All right. Dennis, I will tell you on a personal note that, and I read the bylaws regarding the statements that come before us. So as I stated, we are not allowed to comment or take action on matters that aren't on the agenda. But I appreciate you coming forward, and that is food for thought.
I appreciate your humble voice with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, council statements non-action. Councilman Bryant, I'm going to go ahead and give you the first shot because I can't see your smiling face.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'll take a few moments. I really want to apologize for not being able to be there in person tonight. Lady merging circumstances is going to keep me away, and I will be there as soon as I can. But these first couple of holidays in January and February, my work requirements to attend board meetings on Tuesdays, and they're usually on Mondays. So I apologize for not making it the first meeting or the last meeting. I apologize. And it looks like the next meeting here in February, I'm also going to have to miss. So I will beg apology there and do my best to make it however I can. I also had the privilege this last weekend of joining in a community effort to clean up an area that's not in the City of Taft, but for all intents and purposes, it's Taft. And that was at the Veterans Memorial Building there in Fort City. So I just want to send out a huge thank you to everyone who participated. I hope folks have an opportunity to go down and to take a look at that building and hopefully saw it before and saw how much better it looks afterward. We had a bunch of folks donated time and effort. We had a lot of folks who donated either cash or in-kind efforts. So I just want to say a big thank you to those folks because they couldn't have done it without them. So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you for the time, and I'll be there as soon as I can.
All right. Thank you very much, sir, and we're glad you're able to participate in some way, even though you're not in person, but we know that you're working hard and considering all the issues, and you take your representation of the people seriously. So thank you very much, Councilman. All right. Next up, Councilman Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just an observation over the last year. As some of you know, I've been a little bit busy attending to my wife's medical needs, but I would still have to go out and do shopping. I'd still have to go to the stores, sometimes go out and get food, depending on what we're doing. And during all of this COVID-19 issues that we're having, the one thing that I've noticed about the City of Taft and the people here in the City of Taft is that they're not letting this keep them down. They're doing their best. They're still cheerful. They're still friendly. They're still going out of their way to help you. I go through the drive-throughs when I can. They have sucked it up, and they're taking care of business. They're friendly. They're nice. And to echo a sentiment given by our mayor here, I love this city. Absolutely, man. There's not a better city in the whole darn county as far as I'm concerned, and I love to come home here. It's just a pleasure to serve here and to work here and to be here and be, you know, retired here. And I just want to say thank you to everybody out in here at Taft. I know you guys are having a hard time with all this, with all the government overreach and regulations, but you guys are doing an outstanding job, everybody. Here at the city staff, the staff level, all the employees, the workers out there at all the private businesses and companies and entities, you guys are just busting it. And I couldn't be more prouder of this city. You are probably one of the cities that I would look at if I was the governor to say, this is where you need to model after. I know that won't happen, but I just want you guys to know, I really appreciate everybody here in the City of Taft. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Crier.
Thank you, Mayor. I too like to show my appreciation to the people who helped out at the TAF Veterans Hall. It needed help, and I'm a member of the Arvin Lions, but I do participate in the TAF Lions Club. I go to most of the meetings and stuff. Like all clubs, we're getting older, and it's hard to get new members and get volunteers. And it's really great that the community as a whole helped out and volunteered their time, money, and food and all that nice stuff to do great wonders there at the Veterans Hall. Very appreciated. I'm speaking on behalf of the TAF Lions Club. Thank you, Josh, and all your supporters and everything, and it was a great, deserving work you did.
That's my pleasure.
And another thing, too, there's a lot of things going on. What's really sad is that we have a whole bunch of our young folks, students, young adults, going to school and stuff. You know, some are going, some are not. And a lot of great change going on in our country, in our state, too. And I do worry, you know, being a parent of three children, which two of them were adopted, and that, what are they teaching our young folks in school? Are they teaching American things? Or are they changing history or no past history or different history? And as I'm a firm believer, like most people, that history repeats itself. It does not repeat every year, but it does repeat ever so many generations. You know, we go from one extreme to the other and then back to the middle, and then the process repeats itself. My concern is that we're becoming a nation of takers and not as givers, helping out, doing things in life. We're waiting for government, for the handouts from the government, and if people don't realize it, whatever the government gives you or does for you is not their money. It's our money. We pay taxes on it. At some point, children or grandchildren are going to have to pay for all that. You know, it's got to be paid back somehow. Otherwise, we'll have, in some future, government's not going to be able to do anything. When government can't help out or govern by laws of the land and other than by fiat, we're going to have anarchy, chaos, and uncertainties in our country. And we have the longest surviving constitutional republic in the world. We outlasted Rome a lot longer. They changed many governments. We still have one government in our country, is our constitution. And myself, I'm really concerned that we're losing it or we're being, or we change and everything. And then people ask me, why are you saying this here at the City Council? Because it affects every one of us here in our town and our citizens here through our way of living, through our getting work. For example, the oil industry, you know, I don't know of any solar plants around here close enough here to build solar panels. You know, where are they going to go to work? So we're going to rely on government for their checks in order to pacify it, just like in Rome. You know, when it, before it fell, they had, they were dependent upon foreigners to run or to do the work of their country. They couldn't get their own citizens to do it, so they had circuses, and they gave up bread or food for welfare and everything in their country at the time, and they fell. It can happen here. History does repeat it. But we have the best country in the world, the best government, and by God, we have the best city council and city, I feel, in our state. We're a very, very given city here, and I'm very blessed to be here, and a lot of our council members in the city here, and the members here of our citizens here are blessed for having our, say, that we can do things and make things happen. And, you know, we need to bless our, the businesses that are in Taft that are trying to survive in this COVID environment, trying to deal with the regulations that's borne upon them, taking their risks, trying to stay open and survive, trying to survive. So I'd like to make sure that everybody just go ahead and support our restaurants, support our businesses, support our local owners' automobile shops, and any business in town, hairdressers, barbers, participate and go to them. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right. And that's a great deal because you're right, which allows me to bring everybody's attention to what's going on here? What's all the red? What's the scarlet all about? Well, it's about Valentine's Day. It's a big one coming up. It's the sweetheart of a holiday, quite frankly. So who's responsible for this up on the dais? Well, that would be Old School, a local business. And go see Renee at Old School because she also has a great deal of flowers that will be available, as do several other shops within our city. So just like you were saying, Mayor Pro Tem, support our local businesses. I mean, so go get something for the ones that you love and take them to dinner. There are places that you can go eat in the City of Taft, but if you're going to spend a nickel, spend it right here. Support local business. It's critically important at this time, now more than ever. So I'd have to agree with you. Speaking of our industry, and I'm not talking about just the City of Taft's industry or Kern County's industry, I'm talking about an industry that is not only critical to the security of a nation, but an industry that brought us out of the dark ages, is responsible for quality of life day in and day out, every single day, is the oil and gas industry. Got some new people in the White House, folks, and they've got a different attitude. My executive order, what did the president do? He eliminates the Keystone Pipeline, and that's supposed to save the planet, go green. Well, let's examine that for just a brief moment. The people whose oil will not be coming in the United States, and we need heavy oil, is our neighbors to the north, Canada, our neighbors to the north. If they cannot move it via pipeline, which is the safest, least impactful to the environment way to move petroleum, then it's going to move by train within Canada. They're going to have to get it to the West Coast, where they'll probably load it on ships, and those ships will be bound for the Far East in Asia. And that oil that goes over there is refined, and the refining process is not nearly as clean as we do right here in the United States of America, and the end product does not burn nearly as clean as the end product that we produce right here in the United States of America. So are we going to save the planet? No, as a matter of fact, we're going to hurt the planet. By doing that, our president hurt the planet. But that's the hypocrisy and shortsightedness of this whole thing, and we need to look at it. So many people unfortunately think, oh, hallelujah, and they're cheering that, and they're cheering these moves. You know, I hate pipelines, and I want to save the planet and get rid of fossil fuels. Well, you know what? Instead of talking about it, and there are those out there that are saying that, and truly, I would hate for anybody to go through life and suffer the angst and the degradation of being a full-time hypocrite. So if there's anybody out there that really hates pipelines and wants to eliminate hydrocarbons in oil and gas from their life, or at least start, I'll tell you an easy way to start that. Here's an easy way to start that. This right here, this item. It's called a crescent wrench. All you need to do is take one of these, and they're easy to find, they're all over the place. Go outside your house right now, if you live in a house, or your apartment, or if you live in your mother's basement. Just go outside and put this on, the gas valve, the natural gas valve that feeds your house, and turn it 90 degrees and quit using natural gas. Lead by example. Instead of making a statement, make a difference. So if you truly don't like pipelines and you truly don't like hydrocarbons, then I'm sure you won't have a problem with suffering in the cold or the issues that come with not having that available. So there it is. There's your crescent wrench. Go out there, make a difference, quit talking about it. That's all I have regarding that. Next up, we have Planning Commission report, and we have a planning commissioner here
Good evening, Mayor Nor, members of the council. At our most recent Planning Commission meeting, we reviewed two proposed changes to local ordinances, one dealing with the citing of wireless communication facilities. I think the last time it had been really updated was 2008, and with the experience of the last few times of dealing with wireless communications, we're going to be recommending to the council some changes to how that process works, including the opportunity maybe for the Planning Commission to come back in and work on some things at a later date if they're not following the guidelines. The other item was for alcohol beverage guidelines. City of Taft is heavily impacted because our restaurants and grocery stores and fast food places, liquor stores, all that are all within a single, really within a single section of the city. So again, they're updating, being updated to more clearly reflect ABC's definitions for alcohol control and outline when it is possible for the planning director to approve a permit for having alcohol on-site or when it's required that a conditional use permit, and then therefore needs to go to the Planning Commission for approval. Both of those should come to you sometime before the end of this year. Other than that, that's it for today.
Still doing the people's business. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, City Manager statements. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. No statements tonight.
Thanks, sir. Next up, City Attorney's statements.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm safe.
Glad you're here, though.
Thank, I'm glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Okay. I'm listening.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you brought the ongoing fight against petroleum up. In doing a little bit of research, I noticed that August 27th, every year is recognized as National Petroleum Appreciation Day. This week, that happens to fall on a Friday, my recommendation, and I'm looking for concurrent, is that the week of August 23rd of this year, that the City of Taft recognizes our appreciation of oil, I mean Oil Appreciation Week in the City of Taft, with Oil Appreciation Day falling on the 27th, of course.
Well, I don't think you're going to have any trouble getting concurrence on that one. I will stay away from the mic for just a second, give one of these two gentlemen the opportunity to do that.
I concur.
Me, too.
Looks like you have unanimous concurrence, councilmen. Thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Thank you, sir. I look forward to working with Ms. Mayfield and of course yourself to get the beverage in there pointed, and very much appreciated for what we get by way of petroleum.
All right. Very good. Thanks again. All right. Next up, we have Consent Calendar Items 9 through 11. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the City Council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public has reached out? out to you, Madam Clerk, regarding?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Those items include item number nine, the minutes for the January 19 regular meeting; item number 10, the payment of bills, some $954,000 worth; and item number 11, proposed street name change from East Cedar Street to Bob Hampton Road. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving a Street Name Change from East Cedar Street to Bob Hampton Road." Does any council member wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar? Hearing none, at this time, I would consider a motion approving consent calendar items nine through 11.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Crier.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey.
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that's approved on a four oh vote. Thank you all.
Bryant, are you abstaining from item number nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that clarification. Okay, that brings this evening's open session portion of the meeting to a close. The city council will be going into closed session for several items. Item A, threat to public services consultation regarding COVID-19 impacts to public facilities and services, Government Code Section 54957. Item B, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9B, two potential cases. Item C, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A, case number BCV-20-100096. Finally, item D, conference with labor negotiator Craig Jones, City Manager, Government Code Section 54957.6, all units. Want to thank you all for being a part of this evening's meeting. Remember to help your neighbor. This community is counting on everybody helping one another. Don't forget, Valentine's Day is coming. Don't blow this one. It hurts. Have a good evening.